We're going to start our regular voting meeting. Let's start with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing?
We're down to the minutes.
Okay. The, what we're going to do before we start is, it's the first time I can do the student report. We're going to make comments.
We'll do the minutes and then if you have your.
Okay, alright, so the first item is to approval of the minutes for the March 22nd. Can I have a motion to approve minutes for the March 8th, 2018 minute?
So moved.
Mr. Anderson? Ms. Mitchell. Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. To go a little bit out of order, because our student representative apparently has three exams tomorrow. Is that correct? Okay, and we have Lauren Caseman?
Aye.
Hi, tell us what you've got for us.
My name's Lauren Caseman, I'm a senior at the high school. So I wanted to thank you on behalf of all the students at this school for allowing us to partake in the student walkout last week, last Wednesday. We had the opportunity to, you had, you were able to volunteer whether or not you wanted to participate in the walkout. It was a memorial for the seventeen victims of the Parkland shooting. And it was basically a student run. It was a group of students who got together after school, who were concerned about school safety and wanted some way to memorialize the students. And with the help of several teachers and Dr. Harner and the board, we were able to have a very safe memorial and people were able to choose whether or not they wanted to do it. And I thought it was a really great thing for our school to partake in. For choir news, since that's basically all I do, we have our choir trip coming up this week. We're leaving on Saturday and we're coming back Friday. We're going to North Carolina, Georgia, and South Carolina. And we're going to be singing at a bunch of different venues and churches and such. And also, at the same time, there are language trips going on. The Spanish students are going to Peru and Ecuador. And Mandarin students are going to China. So that would be really cool. We also have people working on mini-thon. The mini-thon committee is working really hard. We have our mini-thon coming up on April 21st. So we're working really hard for that. It's going to be a 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM event. And we're hoping to get a lot more people than we had in the past couple of years. I won't be able to be there because I'll be at All-State Choir with six of my other peers, which is a new record for our school. And then, other than that, we're just beginning preparation for finals and AP exams, which are coming faster than a lot of us realize. So we're getting a lot of schedules from teachers about the whole end of the year, what's going on for seniors, juniors, and how they're going to prepare us for the exams, who's taking the final and whatnot. Yeah, thank you.
That's terrific, thank you. What are your exams in tomorrow? What are the exams in tomorrow?
Are the exams tomorrow?
Yeah. Wow. Okay. I guess, I guess it's not a secret, you're going to study in college.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, get out of here, go study. There you go. I have to apologize to the audience if I'm a little mumbly tonight. I had a root canal four hours ago. And, I know, my, I don't know, my wife thinks I deserved it. So, alright, so, next item, we're going to move to general public comment. I believe we have five people signed up. Ms. Bishop?
Rick Orloff?
Okay, Mr. Orloff wants to go last. Okay, next.
Kimberly Goll?
Hi, my name is Kimberly Goll. I'm a resident of Haycock Township for the past twenty-one years. I'm also an employee of QCSD for the past sixteen years as a nurse at Nighting Elementary. I am here tonight as an advocate for students and staff as their healthcare professional and to fight for her, our nurse that will be furloughed. My question to everyone is, what is a school nurse's responsibility and role in the school district? Your immediate answer may be, is that we take care of ill and injured children, and you are correct. But this is only a fraction of what we do. We work tirelessly each day to keep children in school and in class. What we do not, what we do, yeah, I'm sorry, what we do is not measurable on a scale or graph. How do you measure the value of compassion and caring for another human being? How do you measure giving emotional support to students and parents? How do you measure the time spent investigating and informing the community resources for a wide variety of issues? How do you measure setting up schedules for treatments, medications, and visits requiring nursing intervention without interfering or diminishing academic time? How do you measure finding coverage so a building does not go without a nurse? How do you measure the quality of time for our three private schools, five elementary schools, soon to be four, the sixth grade center, Strayer Middle School and High School required and are entitled to, of our nursing services? What is measurable is the number of visits we see each day, the number of medications we administer, the number of sick students and staff we send home. We are required by the state to do vision screening for every single student from kindergarten to twelfth grade, to complete hearing screenings. Any failures of these screenings, we refer to private and our community services to provide for correction, to complete height and weight screenings, to make sure immunizations are compliant, and insist in getting students into compliance, to have physical and dental examinations completed, and to provide in-school free examinations for those who can't afford a physician or dental visit. We compile health information on each student provided by parents and guardians and primary care providers. We input all this information, along with medication students may receive during the school day, into our healthcare system of SNAP, all by ourselves, each nurse in our individual schools, all in between visits and communication with parents and staff. The twelve nurses in the district are overwhelmed now, and we are to be reduced in numbers by furloughing a nurse. The student census is not changing, the health issues are not decreasing. I have four hundred students, fifty staff members, and any number of visits coming to my school each day. I am their healthcare professional. I am the only nurse in the building. I have no one to cover for me for lunch or break. Putting a sign on my door stating I'll be at lunch or break is quickly removed for any student, staff, or visitor that is in need of a healthcare assistance. I am stressing now what next year will bring with more students after the closing of Tahican Valley. I am concerned about overcrowding in the classrooms that is occurring now and more so in the next few years until Nighting Reconstruction is complete. Even after the reconstruction is completed at Nighting, the student body count may well be over six hundred students. I cannot do all that is required by me by myself. I am exhausted now with four hundred students. Each day I pray on my way to school that I'll be given the strength to triage each situation that comes my way, to communicate with students, staff, and parents, to complete what the state requires of me in a Tommy manner, and to go home feeling that job was well done. In reality, I go home exhausted, unable to turn off my brain and start a working list of what needs to be accomplished the next day. The next day is getting harder and harder to face with increase in number of visits, increase in number of changing and challenging health conditions, both physical and emotional, and an increase in community issues that affect our students' mental and physical wellbeing. Are you willing to downsize needed healthcare professionals in the district for the savings of money over the protection of your students, staff, and community healthcare needs? I hope not. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Kevin Kelly. I'm a school psychologist here in Quakertown. I also have a night job. I work at Lehigh University as an adjunct professor. One of the courses I teach is called Crisis Management in Schools. I think it's a relevant topic tonight. You know, a big part of what we talk about in our course, and I'm actually talking about this on Saturday, we're having a colloquium on crisis management up at, up at Lehigh at Mount Tuff Campus, nine o'clock, little plug there. But a big part of what we're talking about, both on Saturday and in our course, is crisis prevention. Because school crisis management is much more than just about security. You know, it's much more than just about locked doors, it's much more than just Alice trainings, it's much more than school resource officers. It's about prevention. I think we should put all our, or most of our regs in school crisis prevention in that basket. Okay? Research backs this up. You know, there's a school counselor that's on the agenda to be furloughed. And a school counselor prevents crises, crises from happening to begin with. They're involved in social, emotional learning in school, they see at-risk kids, they run social skills groups for kids, they see kids individually for counseling, they see kids in groups, they hook families up with resources in the community, mental health resources. And they're about prevention and not putting out fires. Okay? And a school counselor is probably one of the most important pieces of crisis prevention that we have. And in these times, I don't think it's appropriate or the best use of our resources to be furloughing a school counselor. I agree with Kim about nurses too, they're part of our crisis management team in terms of prevention. And also with prevention is, is class sizes. You know, getting to know kids, getting to know families, you know, putting out situations that may become a problem early on, before they become big problems, is what education's about, what teaching's about, it's what we're in the business for. It affects school achievement as well. So, you know, if we're furloughing four teachers and we're losing seven others too, because we're not replacing the teachers that are retiring as well, that's going to have effect on crisis management as well, in my opinion. So I think we don't need less counselors, we need more. We are already, the American Counseling Association recommends two-hundred-and-fifty-to-one ratio. We're not even there now, so we'll be less there. We have virtually the same number of students as next year, so we're going to be dealing with the same number of student difficulties. So that's going to be important too. So I really feel, you know, pleased, it's, schools are more than just school achievement, although it's a big part of it, but it's also about social, emotional learning. And school teachers, school counselors, all the people that are on your agenda that you want to furlough are worth it. They're worth the money. And the best bang for your buck is to get school prevention rather than put out fires. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Shiley Williams, and I'm from Trumbausville. Dear School Board, I am writing this letter in regards to our school counselor, Ms. Gordon. I am a proud student at Trumbausville Elementary School. In second grade, we learned about community service leaders and CPR, and how we, one person can make a difference. Ms. Gordon has make a difference by anti-bullying. Also, she takes a lot of time out of the day to eat lunch with students. Ms. Gordon has made a difference at Trum, and please don't take her away from us. Thank you for your time. Shiley Williams.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for listening to me. I, my name is Shannon Herman. I am a parent of two elementary kids at Trumbausville. This is my daughter, Teagan, she is in fourth grade, and my son, Nate, is in fifth grade. And I was going to come up here and read Teagan's letter, but I'll leave that for you, since Shiley did such a great job from the student perspective. I'd like to give you the, the parent perspective on the furloughs that you're proposing. As Nurse Goll had mentioned, the nursing staff is critical to the parents. I will tell you that I am a professional, I have a bachelor of science degree in, believe it or not, elementary education. And I knew, back then, I was not dedicated nor committed enough to follow through. So I did what all people with elementary ed degrees do, I went into health insurance. And that's now what I sell. But, so I do have an understanding minimal at what every teacher faces, and the workload that you all volunteer for, and that's put upon each teacher, each nurse, and each counselor, and how critical they are to the parent. So I like to think that I'm somewhat informed, I'm a professional, I know what's going on in the world, I watch the news every now and again, not too much, because who could deal with that all the time? But I do know what's going on in the world, and I can tell you without a doubt that the counselors, as Kevin had mentioned, are critical. I have, like I said, my fourth grade daughter here is coming home with problems that I'm like, are you kidding me? And you know who's handling those? Her guidance counselor, Laura Gordon. She is making these problem, making, not the problem, she's making the kids know that they're important. And I'm not saying that I'm not trying to do it at home, but let's be honest, I have two kids. And I'm working full-time, and I come home, and I will listen to their problems for sure, and I absolutely advocate for parental support, but I can't be in that classroom. I can't be there when the crisis hits, and though, as an adult, I may say, are you kidding me? Like, this is what we're, this is what's making us come home crying every day? Because it's fourth grade girl drama. It's nothing too terrible that they won't conquer, but it's also the foundation of what's to come later. And as we've all seen in the news, when there's not that support, even at an early age, that's when these problems start. And as Kevin said, we need to prevent it. As from the nursing perspective, again, somewhat professional, I sell health insurance, right? I should know about some of these things, I deal with claims all day long. But I can tell you, I got to get to work. And I don't know when my kid is really sick, because I'm not a doctor, I'm not a professional, I'm not a nurse. I don't know when they're faking. And I am always going to lean to that side, that they're faking, right? But there have been several times where it's been because of our nurse that I have actually said, are you know, maybe we do need to go to the doctor, it's not, you're not faking. And the one time, we actually found out he had, my son had influenza B, which I immediately pulled him out of school, which was great, because then it stopped the spread of it. And as for the teachers that you're considering to furlough, please bear in mind that class size does make a difference. It does matter. And our teachers are already overworked, as you well know. I know you're not ignorant to these facts. But it matters, and it makes a difference to the parents, to the students. So thank you for listening to me, I appreciate your time.
Good evening, everyone. I know you haven't seen me for a little while, because it's not TSA-based this time. I'd like to speak on behalf of Ms. Gordon. Everybody knows that I have been in this district for a very long time. And in being in this district for a very long time, I've seen not the best part of the district, I would like to admit. I know that we've grown a lot, but this district has a lot of people that have issues with acceptance. I know this because I went through the district, and I know this because I got jumped almost every single day at PAF, because I was the big farm boy. And everybody wanted to find out how the big farm boy, how strong he really was. And there was two, and then there was three, and then there was four, and five, and then it ended up at fifteen. I don't know what my guidance counselor name was, because they didn't handle it. I remember I was in Dr. Fetterman's office all the time, because I was always fighting. And then finally, it took my father to figure out who exactly all these kids were, called up each of their houses, and said, if they really want to fight Clint, we'll do it in the front yard, one at a time. Maybe if I would have had a guidance counselor, I wouldn't have to tell that story, or if I had a guidance counselor that cared enough about me, like Ms. Gordon cares about the children at Trum, then that wouldn't be a, a story that I need to tell. She knows every single one of their names. She goes into every one of their classes. She finds out what makes them tick, and she makes them tick a little faster and a little better, and learn a little more. Alright, she, I've seen lots of different guidance counselors, and she is one of the best I've ever seen. To furlough her would be a travesty. The children of Trum would be devastated. And to be quite honest, the children that are coming in from Tahican Valley kind of deserve to have their guidance counselor help them transition as well. I kind of believe that that person could do halftime between PAF and Trumbausville to help those Tahican students transition. They have a relationship with the families that are going to get dispersed to at least two different elementary schools. I don't know what the exact plan is, I do apologize for that. But those children that need to go to a new school deserve to have their guidance counselor, who knows their name, who knows what makes them tick, there to help them transition to a new school. Mrs. Gordon has helped us with 504 plans for two of our children, she helps us with documentation whenever we need it, my kids talk about when she comes into the classroom. You know, we have money for other things, we should have money for proper staffing as well. Thank you.
Could you give me just one minute? I'd like to address some things for, to the audience, if I may?
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
There is no doubt that not a single teacher that-
Apolog- how's that? Testing, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Everyone that's on the, on the furlough list is an incredible employee, and, and is student-centered and children-first in, in their action. I know, I have the principal for Laura Gordon right here with Mr. Schmucker, and he has pleaded to not let us furlough a teacher or his, his guidance counselor. I know how great she is, I've watched her in action in meetings, in data team meetings. But one thing, sir, good to see, it's been, has been a while. I would say everything you said is correct. One of the things that I need to, I would like to share with new board members, and it's a data that I, I added yesterday or this morning to the slide, could you bring that up, so we have a little bit of background? The board has, in the last four years, added in numerous guidance counselors. It used to be you at PAF only had a halftime guidance counselor. Four years ago, in, in the fall of 2014, we added a guidance, a three guidance counselors to the elementary level. And, and so we have a full-time guidance counselor in every elementary school. Last year, when we, when the board voted to close Milford, we didn't access a guidance counselor. Matter of fact, the guidance counselors are there. So you have one per building at the elementary level, you have with the same, roughly the same enrollment at the sixth grade center, two guidance counselors, and at the, and with the same, basically, enrollment, a little bit less students at the, at Strayer this year, we still have three full-time guidance counselors. So you have more guidance counselors, or the same guidance counselors as we had last year. If you look at the data here, in Bucks County and the surrounding areas, we have the best guidance counselor to student ratio in, in the county, definitely, and in the, in the region, most likely. We had a couple other places up here on the list, like Southern Lehigh. The, as Doc Kelly talked about how wonderful she is, and how important it is, definitely, given what's been going on the last four weeks in the, in the country, it's been exacerbated for years. It's just coming to the forefront and, and in all the news. Right now, we rank, we have the least amount of students, it's three hundred and nine students per guidance counselor now. The Professional Association, Doc, I've seen that, is two-hundred-and-fifty-to-one. My goal as a, as a principal, as a middle school and high school principal, and as a superintendent, it was three hundred, or three-hundred-and-twenty-five-to-one. The national average is four hundred and-
Forty-three.
Four-hundred-and-eighty-three? Four-hundred-and-eighty-three students to one guidance counselor, which is dreadful. And we're at three-oh-nine right now, and ranked number one in the region for guidance counselors to student ratio. So the board has, in the, in the recent past, has allowed us, the administration and, and our team to hire and have one guidance counselor per building at the elementary levels to help that and to support those things, because as Doc will tell you, he'll get up here and talk, can talk for hours, the issues are onset much earlier than they ever have been before. And, and, and not just bullying, but I would tell you, sir, I used to get beat up on the way home from school, because my dad was a cop, not a farmer. And, and so I, and that was in elementary school, so I can appreciate that, and I didn't have a guidance counselor to help me with that. But my dad told me to go out and figure it out.
Yeah, but I think kids aren't allowed to figure it out.
That's exactly right. You're right.
They need the support.
They need this, need, need the support. So right, right now-
They need the support. They need the support.
And so, so, so with, so with, with this, with this happening, we'll go to number two in the county, overall. So they, they're, I just want to make sure the facts are out there and how we look and all that, not to minimize what we're doing. Laura Gordon is a phenomenal guidance counselor. And, and, and so it's not about that. And we'll have later on in the meeting, we'll have, the board will have a discussion about the, the furlough process. But I wanted to put the facts and thank the students and the parents who have come out here tonight, and also fellow faculty members for supporting that. Thank you.
Dr. Harner, could I ask one question? How do we choose who goes on the list to be furloughed?
Sir, can I, can we have that later on, we have the meeting and the discussion? Thank you. Thank you. That's a good idea.
Are you ready for Mr. Orloff?
Thank you, members of the board. I'm here mainly to talk about the budget and the Act One and the taxpayer. Instead, I understand some of the sympathies that were expressed here. I also would say that there's also some false choices that are being put, put forth as well, but that's a story for another day. On Saturday, I was talking with one of my clients, he's basically like a walking economy. His, the front of his hair is in recession, he's got a, his stomach's in inflation, and the combination of both put him into a deep, deep depression. So he also told me he's strapped for cash and he hadn't the slightest idea where he's going to get it from, and I was very happy to hear that, because I was afraid he had an idea he was going to get it from me. But on a more serious note, we're talking about OPM, other people's money. I was a little disappointed that I requested, and it was next, that I could have a slide up here, just like you had the slide up there about the, about the counselor to student ratio. It does make it easier to make a point, but that was denied me. Anyway, the proposal I'm making tonight is to abide by Act One. Now, by the way, if something of, anything costs too much, you're going to have fewer of it, less of it. So there might be a way to keep these furloughs from happening in another, in another alternative, and I'll get to that in a moment. I wasn't planning on talking about that, but hearing that, it might, this might actually play to that. Act One is an inflationary index to which schools can increase taxes unimpeded. Note that it's always been above the Commerce Department's CPI index, or the Social Security index, and also wage growth. So the Act One index put forth by the state is higher than inflation, and that's been about one percent higher each of the last ten years, about, roughly there. Specific allowances are allowed to exceed Act One. Procedural hurdles to raise taxes above Act One exist, and that's what we're going through now. By the way, for the new, new members of the board, once you voted to- By the way, for the new members of the board, once you voted to not abide by Act One, you basically dominated the first four months of the, of maybe five months of the agenda with Act One procedural votes and meetings and so forth. Had the edict been, been sent down to abide by Act One, then the administration would have moved forward. You would have had a final budget vote. But once you did that, that's going to be the dominant agenda item for almost a half a year. QCSD's proposed 4.2%. That's, I think the Act One was 2.8%. QCSD is given a higher, a higher rate than the state average due to its higher poverty rate. Could go as high as 6%. QCSD's stated reasons to request the Act One exceptions, and it's something you can always pull out of the old playbook, is the pension obligations, increased health insurance, and special educational exceptions. It's been repeated on both sides of the aisle, and I think it's a total myth, 90% of the budget cannot be touched. It can. Only debt service has great difficulty in touching it, and even that can be refinanced with advantage, with advantage in declining interest rate environments. But for the foreseeable future, that ship looks like it has sailed. All else can be touched. The private sector does it every day. Maybe it might be a hot touch, but it can still be touched and they can do it. Bethlehem Steel, a generation ago, failed to touch things too early and as a result, they're not around anymore. Some costs are spinoffs of others. You've got to aim at the root of the costs, such as the fringes that attach to wages. Even healthcare insurances, you can shop, design plans, co-pays, deductibles, wellness credits. If QCSD's health plan costs have increased as a member of a co-op, its utilization must have increased, and I would say why, or ask why, rather. At one point in the last four years, QC, Act, excuse me, excuse me a second. An Act One, Act One, QCAD has lived with, at Act One the past four years. It's exceeded Act One one or two years in the previous five or six years before that. That's nothing to brag about, by the way. Cumulatively, that's at least a 20% compounded tax increase over eight years. Factor growth in the tax base, spending increases even more. QCSD never spent a dollar less than any prior year, never. QCSD only, QCSD is Bucks County's only district to have gone 30-plus consecutive years with a tax increase. Under the Scanlon administration, you had a seven-year period where increased, with the QCSD increased spending 70%, but taxes only increased 50%. I've got a question for you, especially you newbies. How could that happen? How could you increase spending by 70% but only increase taxes by 50? How could that happen? How about some of the old board members? You should know.
It's your floor time, sir.
You're showing your ignorance, sir. Anyway, go moving on. Oh, by the way, I'll, to answer the question, is the tax base was growing tremendously from like roughly 2000 to 2006. So even by standing still, they would have, there would have been a 20% increase in tax revenue. But they outpaced that with a 70% increase in spending. It all basically went to new hiring, increased wages and benefits. Prior to Jim Scanlon, the student-teacher ratio was, staff-teacher ratio was about 12 and 1/2 to 1. And at the end of the Scanlon administration, it was about 8.8 to 1. So there was a lot of hiring that was going on at that particular time. There was one new facility, but all the existing facilities were ignored, as well as the decades Academic experimentation, integrated math, SBG, they dropped geography, earth and space sciences. No standards for history, spring baller to English. And the results were increased cost, declining census, which means declining productivity, and mediocre academic results. Everyone gets an award. 80% of the grades given out in Quakertown are 80s. So my proposal, at least on the fiscal side of this thing, is that the staff, the entire staff of QCSD takes a 0% pay reduction. And I also propose this in deference to our progressives on the board, to take it as a progressive reduction. Say you make less than $25,000, no reduction in compensation. In the past several years, I think there's been too much budget focus to try to balance the whole issue on AIDS, bus, busing, cafeteria, janitorial issues. You really have to go where the dollars are. From $25,000 to $50,000, take a half percent cut in pay. From $50,000 to $75,000, take a 1% cut in pay. From 75 to $100,000, a 1 and 1/2% cut in pay. And anybody making above $100,000, a 2% cut in pay. Now, with the mean W2 compensation of $94,000, more than half of the QCSD employees are paid above $100,000. The weighting of the lower-paid staff brings the mean down to $94,000. Then you're also going to see some spinoffs. Every dollar you reduce in salaries, you save 7.65 cents on the social security match. There's a, I don't know, three or four, maybe five cents on the pensions, plus a reduction in workers' comp. There are false solutions. Early retirement's a false solution. You get a short-term cash flow savings, but what you do is add to the long-term greater costs, especially in Peasars. There's been several attempts at refinancing in the past. Again, what they do is they throw the, they push the debt service out further, so you get a reduction, immediate reduction in cash flow, but you put, you add to the total cost of the district. And by the way, those chickens have come home to roost, given the last, given the early retirements and the re-debt services that we've had in the last 10, 15 years. Benchmarks. You could look at other districts. You could look at the community at large, and I've got some here, by the way. You could look at the private sector job markets. And I would say between 2005, or sorry, since 2005, QCSD has ranged between the third and 12th richest contract in Pennsylvania. So we've sort of created an entitled aristocracy. Take the 0 to 2% reduction. That's the 15, about the 15, that would move you from 12th, where I think presently we're at the 12th richest contract, that would probably knock it back to the 15th richest contract out of 501 school districts. So when you've encumbered, when you're encumbered by the richest contracts, you're going to have the heaviest Peasars obligation. Pensions are always a percentage of wages. Boards since the prompting of Scanlon left QCSD with that third to the 12th heaviest Peasars obligations. And again, those chickens are coming home to roost. Now, what's the effects? If you make the average $94,000, that's a $1,400 reduction in gross pay. Take the 22% marginal federal tax bracket, social security match, Pennsylvania tax, EIT, Pennsylvania UAC, about 35% of that's going to taxes. So that would be a cash reduction of about $926, or 17, 18 bucks a week. So the gross pay would become $92,590. Now, there's a lot of union members here. These guys haven't asked you. I'm asking you. And I think the community would say that. If you really want to stop the furloughs, buck up. In terms of the sympathy, if you take a look at these, I would love, would have loved to put this stat up here, and the school district has it for the whole school district. This is just Richland Township. These are the earned income statistics. There are two people in Richland Township in the year 2013. It's only, there's about a three-year lag to get this because it takes three years to get all the collections in. So forgive me that. This is the last I have available. There are two people in Richland Township that made more than a million bucks. By the way, we don't want them to move. They're, they're paying, each one of those are paying about $15,000 in each, in earned income tax. Conversely, of 489 people out of 8,187 taxpayers, making $100,000 or more. That's only about 5, 6% of the community makes more than $100,000. Half the, half the Quakertown community school district makes more than $100,000. I'm talking about the employee basis.
You don't earn every penny, sir.
For nine months. Very good. Okay. So you do that, if you can adopt the 0 to 2% solution or something akin to that, problem solved. You've got to probably have another half million you've got to squeeze out somewhere else. You may be able to avoid the furloughs. So you also have the choice of optics. You can refuse any givebacks and the community suffers a 4.2% tax increase. And the union agrees, or if they decide to help and they abide by Act One, loaded Act One with all labor costs, then that would be an optic, too. You have choice of two optics. Either demand to the community, and trust me, outside of this room, I don't think there's a lot of sympathy for a 4.2% tax increase. I have a client who has a business, they have rental commercial property and their lease is tied to the, tied to the, to the real estate taxes, how they ride. There's a, that's a pass-through. In another year and a half, they're moving. They're taking three jobs with them. Okay? I have another lady, a friend of my mother, she wanted to move up here and I told her about the taxes in here. Her kids live up here. She's not going to move in Quakertown now. So people are going to start voting with their feet. And it's happening. There's other, other little things I'm hearing. I talked to a state rep who says that his number one complaint in the last several weeks is 4.2%. They think it's insane in this environment. So, with that said, it's up to you guys to go back and decide if you want to buck up or you want to demand the community pays 4.2%. That's all. Thank you.
Hey, any more general public comments? Well, we got one. Mr. Spears, you were, no, Mr. Spears, you were second, next to you, to your left. And then Mr. Ween, and then, then Mr. Spears. I know. It's, it's never a meeting until we hear from you.
All right. Two things. My name's Scott Hendricks, Milford Township, and I'm also the vice president for the sports staff. Two things I'd like to say about what Mr. Orloff said here. Myself, I personally took a $6,000, 15% pay cut, so don't anybody come up here and say, I didn't put any money into this community, and that includes you. Okay? Second of all, you raised the taxes in Richland Township over 300% in one year, so I don't want to hear it.
I think Mr. Ween, you want to go next?
Yeah. Ryan, Ween, QCA president. Sorry if I'm all over the place. Now my notes have turned into like a roadmap here. So I apologize. As far as I know, to the best of my knowledge, we're the only district in Bucks County looking to furlough teachers. How is every other board and administration able to pull it out, pull it off, figure it out? They're all dealing with pension increases, increased healthcare costs, but they make it work without furloughing. At the same time, many of those districts have programs such as full-day kindergarten, widespread full-day kindergarten, that matches about 77% of Pennsylvania districts, I believe, have full-day kindergarten. A lot have team time. Another program cut, research-based program, cut. At what point is it the board's fault? I've heard the pension argument. I've heard the healthcare argument this year. But never look at your own spending. We've had major disruptions to teaching positions in this district in the past few years. Luckily, not many furloughs in that time, but transfers, demotions, the threat of demotions. And then we wonder why scores aren't improving, why we had presentations a couple meetings ago not showing where we want to be with our scores. All of these things have an effect on those scores and on our students' performances. At the same time you're discussing furloughing teachers and guidance counselors and nurses, there's a proposal for one more administrator, to hire one more administrator at the high school. There's already three? Three assistants? Is that correct? Am I wrong? Three assistants and one teacher on special assignment and one principal. At a time when class sizes are going to be increasing, we've been told for at least three years with the decision to build onto NIDIG, why would we furlough our precious human resources? I'm urging you to postpone the vote tonight for these furloughs and allow Dr. Harner to find the money, as many of you have applauded him for doing in the past. The 400 to 1 ratio national average of guidance counselors doesn't make it right. It doesn't make it right that we're still, we might be number one, but we're not where we should be. That doesn't make it right. As far as our contracts and the amount we're paid, we bargain a fair contract with you. We bargain that contract under projections that the district came to us with for the next few years. We decided on those increases based on those projections. So were those projections wrong? We had a 0% increase on scale last year. Point 5, this year. These aren't these major lucrative contracts that some might make you think it sounds like we have. We make a lot of money, but we earn it. Our clients, Mr. Orloff, are children. And why should they suffer?
Thank you, Mr. Ween, Mr. Spears.
It's not plural. I'm not related to Brittany. There's only one, yes. I wanted to talk tonight about the budget and about teacher furloughs and about things, luxuries that we can't afford in this district. My notes are now all over the place as well. I had to cross a bunch of stuff out and move it around, so I'll try to put it in some type of reasonable order here. I had to cross out the whole first part because somebody else already spoke about it, but the transportation costs since the closing of Milford have been up $668,585 a year. I believe this is unnecessary. Along with this, the district should not have to pay to shuttle students between the sixth-grade center and Strayer and pay separate coaches for the team sports that are all between them. It's just a waste of money. The sixth-grade center is wasting money. We're still operating two schools to essentially teach the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. My proposal here is to utilize the sixth-grade center as an elementary school. Cancel the NIDIG job because I believe this is something we can't afford right now. You know, $20 million, when we don't have budget to pay into our teachers, when we don't have budgets to do anything else, it just doesn't seem like it's a necessary expense. You can cancel the NIDIG job, reutilize Milford as a middle school, use the sixth-grade center as an elementary school until you can afford to build a new elementary school or add on to NIDIG or whatever you need to do. I believe operating one whole school for just one grade is inefficient. The other thing, I have a bunch of smaller things on here, too. I noticed when going through the budget, the line items on there, that the advertising is up $5,285 per year. I believe that that newsletter you're sending out quarterly is a waste of money. The district used to print and give out calendars years ago. They stopped doing that to save money. Now they replace it with a newsletter that has to be mailed out at way more expense. It's just something we shouldn't be doing right now. I mean, that's not a huge thing, but, and I'm sorry if Gary, too, but I believe having a full-time PR person is another luxury we can't afford. Sure, it would be really nice, but to pay somebody full-time to write a newsletter, to write blogs, to send out emails when schools are closed, that could all be done by the administrative staff. And that brings me to one other thing, too. When going through all the budget items in the, on the website, I did notice that the administrative costs are only laid out by average... costs are only laid out by average salaries. Now, I can see the teachers' cost, every other cost per year as a whole. All I see is the administrators' average salaries. I want to see like from 2003, 2004, even back a little further, to see if the administrative costs have gone up, because I believe there is cuts to be made. There's about $3 million that needs to be saved in order for the school to pass a budget within the Act One index. That's 2.7% of the budget. I believe some of that can come from administrative consolidation instead of teaching consolidation. I believe it's there, but it's not laid out on the website how much those total costs were, only the average salary, so blah, blah, blah. Oh, another thing about the busing, the transportation costs. I saw on the agenda, there's an item coming up for, to renew the lease with Richland Township and Raza for the softball fields use. Well, couldn't we use Milford's softball fields? I know I've brought this up before and it hasn't been really said, but maybe with a small investment into those, they're sitting there unused. It wouldn't cost any money. I believe that should be something that should be looked into. Again, it's a luxury we can't afford. The Richland fields are nice, but why should we have to pay for something we can't afford at the cost of cutting teachers, counselors, lunch people, anything? What Dr. Kelly said about the parent, my writing is terrible. What Dr. Kelly said isn't just relevant to class sizes, but also lunch sizes. My daughter, my middle school daughter has told me most fights, most problems really occur during these lunch periods, and I found out there's only two lunch periods in the high school for 1,500 students and two lunch periods in the middle school for 800 stu-, or I'm sorry, yeah, 860 students or 840. That's a lot of kids in the same spot. There isn't enough adult supervision to really monitor that, you know? When I went to high school, there was far less people and there was four lunch periods. You know, it's a lot easier to manage, a lot easier to prevent possible problems, and I know it sort of messes with your pride periods and stuff like that, but I believe that's something that could be worked out, too. Sorry, blah, blah, blah. I'm trying to cut this down and, oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's about it. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Chris, when are you going to run for a board seat?
When you decide to give yours up.
No, you can, because I know Dr. Harner would love to spend hours and hours with you, week after week. There we go. All right, is there any more general comments before we go on? There we go. And state your name and area of residence.
Cancel.
Did you bring an instrument?
I did. I brought a flute from Mr. Jackson's daughter. My name is Joe Santinello. I am a resident of Richland Township. I'm a Quakertown music teacher. I teach band at Strayer Middle School and I direct the Panther Marching Band at the high school, and I've been in the district for nine years. I'm one of the many, many teachers in our district who gladly work 50, 55, 60-hour weeks, have the benefit of being very publicly seen all the time. My hours of work are spent at school, in front of kids, after school, in the evenings, doing rehearsals. But I know there's this myth out there that a lot of teachers leave right when the bell rings and they don't think about work and they don't do work until the bell rings the next morning. And just because we don't see them at school doing work doesn't mean it's not happening. I know those teachers leave with bags full of essays to grade, tests to grade, they're on our Canvas platform communicating with students all hours of the day, and I think that's important to recognize, that there's a myth out there that our teachers are clocking out and forgetting about our kids, and I couldn't, don't think that could be further from the truth. Just want to also comment a little, I have no notes, so here we go. Just kind of winging it. Sometimes the data is not always telling the right story. I don't have the exact numbers, but I'm sure someone here can tell me how many students attend Trumbowersville Elementary.
Right there, the principal.
385 right now.
385. So to say that we have a 309 student-to-counselor ratio is an average that doesn't really mean anything. Because Trumbowersville Elementary's student-to-counselor ratio is 385 to 1, and next year it's not going to get better. And I don't know what the numbers are at the other elementary schools.
We'll have 600 next year, I believe, at top.
So to say 309 to 1 is a nice number, but a lot of times averages aren't telling us the whole story. And I think that's really important for our board to consider. We've seen all the averages of class sizes and now we're seeing a guidance counselor average. The averages don't really mean anything in reality. I think there's also going to be some people that are going to talk about this teacher contract. And I just want to say that I don't think it should ever come to the point that we point to the contract as a reason for furloughs. This contract, as Ryan commented, was fairly bargained between the board and the teachers' union, and it's not a surprise. We signed it two years ago. We knew what it was going to be and we knew what it is, and we've had, we have three more years of it. And to point to this contract now and say, "Well, salaries this, seniority this," I don't think that's a fair representation of our contract to put out to the public. So I just want the board to consider that as well. And finally, as we talked about with our counselor, our nurse, he's, just generally, the morale of our district, I know teacher morale has been something we've commented on many times and had many discussions about. And people can say, "Well, they have nothing to be so sorry about. They make $100,000 a year, they do this, they do that." The truth is, the last four years in our district have been chaotic, and for whatever reason, some of them outside of our control and some of them not, but for whatever reason, there's been a lot of chaos here for the last four years. There's been a lot of teachers changing positions. There's been a ton of teachers teaching subjects they've never taught before. There's been a ton of teachers teaching grades they've never taught before. There's a ton of teachers who had spent 15, 20 years in a elementary school's community and family and knew every single person in that neighborhood and every sibling and every parent and every aunt and uncle, and then get dropped in a different neighborhood and a different school. Those things are not only stressful to our teachers, but they're not good for kids. And that's the bottom line. None of us teachers got into this because we wanted to have really great healthcare or make $100,000 at the end. You can ask any teacher in this school district while they got into teaching, and I guarantee you're not going to hear not one person say they got into teaching because they wanted a really nice salary and great healthcare. Many people say we have it, but that's not why we're here. That's not why we give our time past the contracted hours in Quakertown. We do it because we care about kids. We want to help kids. We want to help our community. And every time we move a teacher from one grade to another or from one school to another or we have seven people retire and we don't replace any of those positions or we furlough or we do anything like that, it causes a ton of stress for the teachers. It's very traumatic, but that's not the most important thing. The most important thing is it's really bad for the kids. As one of our other speakers said earlier, those poor kids at Trumbowersville that desperately need that guidance counselor, not a guidance counselor, they need that guidance counselor. To take that person away is terrible for our children, and that's what I hope to keep everyone aware of this evening. It's so easy to get caught up in numbers, averages, thinking of our teachers and counselors and nurses as pawns that we move around, but the most important thing, remember, is those are human beings that have a connection with a whole bunch of other little human beings. And when we start moving things around like this and we start taking some pawns out and not replacing them, yeah, it sucks for us, but I'm an adult, I'm going to suck it up. I'm going to buck up, I guess you could say. But for the kids, it's traumatic, it's damaging, and it's unacceptable.
I was a teacher in this district, and just so all of you know, in the early '90s, there was a budget problem and the teachers at that time gave up half of their raise. They took their raise and left it go from September to January. And at that time I was making about $30,000, and we did that, so, you know, to consider giving something up to maybe keep some of your staff seems to me like something that might be possibly done.
That kind of like shoots down what I was about to say in a way. What I was going to say, and Mr. Anderson interjected a little bit, aside from Mr. Anderson just said, nobody on this board has ever sat here, nobody on this board has ever sat here and looked at the union members out there and said, "We expect a cut in your salary." Several members of the audience have stood up and said, "We expect your salaries to be cut. Why don't you give back 5%? Why don't you give back 10%?" Nobody on this board said that, Mr. Anderson accepting again, but we haven't said that. And when Mr. Santinello got up there and looked at the board and said, "Well, we're really not happy that we keep hearing," we don't say that. We understand you guys, we negotiated a contract with you, and you're in the middle of the contract. Nobody here is seeking recompense of any salaries. That's the one thing I want to say about that.
Up, there we go. Come on. Come on up, state your name and area of residence. Sorry, I wasn't paying attention. Ms. Bishop is boning me up on protocol.
Okay, sorry, I'll be quick, I promise. My name is Katie Grayshuck-Robins. I've been in the school district for 13 years and I live in Pensperg and I attended Upper Perk School District. However, from the time I was a little girl, I had the honor, and I'm going to use that word, I had the honor of being in Room 118 at Twicken Valley Elementary where my mom taught for, I believe, 35 years. And there's nothing worse that anyone can say to an educator than they leave at 4:00 and their day is done or they get paid for nine months. I went in to Take Your Daughter to School Day every time I could go, Take Your Child to Work Day, and I loved it. And I learned to respect educators because when my mom could have been playing board games with me at night, she sat on the couch and she graded papers, or she still sends letters to students that graduated and meets with them at the pavilion. Why? Because she loves them. We signed up for this profession because we love children, we want to make a difference. It's not about the salary, and I don't want to hear that anymore. The problem with furloughing educators is you're furloughing people that have a passion, a passion to teach, a passion to touch the lives of children, and when you furlough, you take away a piece of them. And I know each of you work hard up here, and I'm not going to speak to what you do and I'm not going to speak to another profession's salary because I don't know what they do day in and day out, and I think it's ignorant to speak about a salary in which you do not do their job. But I will say that the art teacher that's on here to be demoted, she's exceptional. Every lunch, I drop my kids off to eat their lunch, and I'm going to tell you what our art teacher's doing. She's eating lunch with children every single day. She has open art. Our population of special needs in our, in Path Elementary School is high, and I'm going to tell you, she's exceptional with all children, and she makes each and every one of them feel amazing and empowered and able. And I'm not angry, and I know my voice is quivering, because I'm passionate, I love my job, there's nothing else. It's not even a job, it's a passion, it's my life. And, you know, I'm sorry, I don't know the other educator that spoke before me, but I can tell that he is passionate as well. And before you make this vote, if you can hold off on this vote, I'm begging you to, because by your vote, you're changing nine staff lives, you're changing student lives. We need them. Thank you for your time.
Any more public comments? Okay, that said, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Harner?
Yes, sir. We only have one report. Janet, would you do the introduction?
Good evening. It's my honor and pleasure to introduce Elizabeth Alvino, who is one of our superior high school teachers who works with our learning support and our life skills students. Elizabeth, this year, took on an additional challenge by opening up a new program. I don't want to talk too much about it. She has a presentation and two students here this evening and one of our support staff members here as well to talk through exactly what we're doing and the exciting things happening at the high school. So this is Mrs. Alvino, and she can introduce the students at the end. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Harner, for inviting me to talk about ASPIRE. ASPIRE's a new program at the high school. We started in September.
I'm sorry, can you use the microphone, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
And.
The person may be solve your problem.
All right. No?
Can you see the, please?
The what?
Just these.
Is this your presentation or?
Yeah.
I don't know if your clicker will work, but that'll work at least.
Okay, thank you. Yep, it works. Okay, so ASPIRE is an acronym because we're special ed, that's what we do. It stands for Acquiring Skills, Professionalism, Independence, and Responsibility for Education and Employment. It is a program for students 18 to 21, so many students, not many, but a group of students after they meet their graduation requirements may not be ready to leave school, and they are entitled to additional education. Previously, we would contract with other out-of-district programs at great expense to the district. So this program is actually saving the district a great deal of money, but more importantly, it is individualized, it's focused on the students' needs and goals, and it is designed to be a three-year program, so we will revisit the same skills over and over at their increasing levels of instruction. So something like banking skills will keep at it and keep increasing the level of difficulty for students. It is highly individualized. In other words, we are basing each student's program on what their interests are, what their goals for employment are, and what their abilities are. Other programs sometimes funnel all the students into culinary or into one area, and we are not doing that. In fact, we have a student who wants to work in early childcare, and he's doing an internship helping in the kindergarten over at QE. So other students have interests in game design and we're looking at jobs in like, you know, in that area. It is. It is, we're using community-based instructions, so we're out there in the community, looking at different types of jobs, and also service learning. Many times, students with IEPs are on the receiving end of help, and we want them to know that they are contributing members of society, that they can help many people themselves. And our goal is for them to be as independent as possible going forward. So, the core, ASPIRE is actually three courses. It's Period 5, 6, and 7 in the high school day, and the first period, Period 5, is Employment Skills, and you can see the topics that we cover. One of the most important is the social skills in the workplace. So, as soon as the bell rings and Fifth Period starts, they're not at school anymore, they're at work. And we conduct classes the way a, you know, a workplace staff meeting would be. They're expected to treat each other like colleagues and step up to a much more mature level of communication with each other. They all have accounts with Job Search tools. PA Career Zone is one that we use along with Naviance, and that way, they can research jobs, they can research careers, they can research post-secondary education. They all have resumes on there that they update regularly. And that PA Career Zone account will actually be something they can do after they leave us. In fact, if they type in, they'll keep their account, if they type in NJ Career Zone, it'll show them the same things with their account in New Jersey. So, there's actually a budgeting tool there, they can find out the cost of living in different parts of the state, and also in local states. So, thank you for the Panther Van, we use it all the time. It is, without it, we'd be lost. Part of our community-based learning is finding out about different jobs that students may not have thought of. This is a local farm, and as we left this tour, the students, I was told that the students would be welcome to come back for actual employment. We've also toured other places in this community, and that's one of our strengths, is this is focused on Quakertown. This is Lowe's, and we learned that most of the employees at Lowe's have high school diplomas. Most of them learn their specialty on the job. And if they want to move from carpentry to horticulture, there are training things, and they can sign up and do that, and get into things that are more interesting to them. Most of our students have pets at home, love pets, a lot of them thought they might want to work with pets. So, we do move around the community. We also do service learning. We go to Quakertown Food Pantry once a week, and the students, all those donations that come from the high school, we sort them, we look at their labels, we make sure they're not out of date, we get them on the shelves, and we get them ready to be distributed. We also learned that they have pet food for the people with pets, so sometimes we repackage the pet food for them. We work once a week at Swan's Pantry, and we do the things that their employees do, which is awesome, that they're wonderful for us there. They have, always have work waiting for us, set aside, and we need to use a lot of teamwork with that. Many times, they'll have one of those display pallets, and we'll have to totally unpack it, repack it with price tags on it, and keep it all in order in the right categories. And kids, I think, really enjoy going there, they're very nice to us. This, I have to do that. So, just a sense of the pride that students get from doing, oops. Some of the students find that they have a special gift for some things they never thought of. And he is very proud of that. Okay, so, daily living skills are things that you, we sometimes call adulting now, it's a new term, right? One important part of that is personal finance, so we do lessons that are functional math and involve banking and understanding credit, things like that. Another very important thing is health and safety, learning when to see a doctor, how to, what things can be cared for at home safely, and staying out of the emergency room for everything. And nutrition and healthy food, we cover that as well. Okay, so, we have a bank, ASPIRE has its own bank, it pays interest on savings. Students get a paycheck every week, they deposit their paycheck after they endorse their check appropriately. Their account accrues interest, unlike my checking account, and it encourages them to understand the value of saving. And then, that checking account can be used either to save for something big, like a pizza party, or they can buy a fidget spinner, earbuds, a snack, something like that. This is an online store, the items are actually in the room, but they shop online, there's an online form, and they write a check to make those purchases. We also provide meals to Aid for Friends. We make 24 meals a month, so we're now up to 144 meals that we've prepared. And this starts with discussing the nutrition of the meal, what's appropriate for the season. Our first meal was for Thanksgiving, we did it in October. And making sure that it's nutritionally balanced, economical, we're not going to compete with Chef Polk on this. We want meals that they can eat at home, that they can afford at home. And all of our meals are pleasant to look at, they're all prepared with serve-safe protocol, so the students are learning that, so if they do want to go into food service, they will know what the, you know, what the procedures are. And you can see, that was our last meal prep with our 24 meals, they're all packaged up for Aid for Friends. And it's similar to Meals for Wheels, it's for homebound people. We do work for Hope Restored, which is a thrift shop in town. Go there, ladies, it's really nice clothing. They're moving to a better, bigger location right next to Moyer Shoes, and the proprietor tells me that once they're there, she'll be able to have our students working in the shop as well. But right now, what we do is, we pick up their donations, and we sort through it, we inspect them, we discard some for recycling, but some of them, we launder, we iron. There's Laney putting a price tag with the price tagging gun, and then we deliver them back to Hope Restored every two weeks. So, the students are learning how to do laundry, but they're also helping the community in a really important way, because this organization provides scholarships for people that need rehabilitation from addiction. Our last course is Self-Advocacy and Interpersonal Skills, and you can see our topics there. And one of the most important things in this category, many of these skills we embed in all the other activities, but keeping them safe, so that they can make safe decisions going forward when they're, you know, not with their parents all the time, is one of the most important parts of this course. Whoops. So, what I'm hoping for going forward, we started this year with five students, and by now, we're up to eight, and I believe we have a ninth starting soon. We have 11 students enrolled definitely for next year. Those are students who don't have to be placed out of the district. And that's and counting, because as IEPs are happening, we are getting more students, and possibly even one from another district, which will be a tuition-paying student. And so, I'm looking for additional community partnerships. If any of you have a business, you'd like us to be able to tour, if you have an opportunity for a student to do an internship, please let me know. Sorry. Also, we're setting up a school store, an actual school store, where the students will learn to use cash register, how to make purchases, pricing, things like that, inventory. Next year, we're hoping to be a full-day program, not just a half-day, and that'll give us more opportunities in the community, because there's some things that we need to be able to get there a little earlier. And we're also looking for more opportunities for individualized work-study. So, now I'll have Laney and Stephen come on up here and tell you what they like about ASPIRE. Laney, what do you like about ASPIRE? You want to go first?
No.
No? Uh-oh. Go ahead, Stephen.
What I like about ASPIRE is working at Swan's Pantry. When I'm there, I stock and price items. I also use the crusher to crush boxes and keep the store safe and clean.
Now, what do you like, what do you like to do at ASPIRE, Laney?
I like learning new jobs.
You like, you like cooking, right?
I like cooking.
And she's really good with that price gun also. Okay. That enough?
Yeah.
Okay, the last thing I'm gonna say is, please follow us on Twitter, we're doing some really exciting things. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. If you don't have anything else, Dr. Harner, then...
No, but I just want to thank you very much for your program, your initiative, all the hours upon hours of hard work to make it happen, and what you're doing for our children, and also bringing those that are, have left us back in-house so we can do it, because we can do it better ourselves. Thank you very much.
That's terrific, thank you. Moving on to our standing committee reports. First one is Finance Committee Report. That's me. Tonight, in the Finance Committee, we got a third look at the 2018-2019 budget, which now shows a budget for shortfall of just over $2 million, down from $3 million at the Act I Index, a little better than $1 million from the last look. The savings predominantly come from salaries and health cares, accounting for most of that difference. We also received an update on the intermediate unit budget, which is projected to be $4.8 million next year. We have the amendment to the school facilities bond left over from the high school to provide funding for the Richland Elementary School restroom restoration, the sixth-grade center parking lot, and the Trumbowersville Elementary roof replacement. That's added to the Agenda Action items, which we will vote on tonight. And that's it from the Finance Committee, unless Ms. Mitchell has something to add. Okay, so, moving on to the Policy Committee, everyone's favorite.
What? Get no respect. It is exciting. But we didn't have a policy committing tonight. This is from February. So, there were, second reading and board approval were done last time, and there's been no changes made to these since the first reading. So, it is Policy 303, Employment of Administrative Employees. We basically updated the language to combine administrative, professional, and classified employees into one. Our goal is to reduce as much as possible. 403 was Employment of Professional Employees, 503, Employment of Classified Employees, same thing. So, 327 was the leadership team, and we updated some titles to more accurately reflect our leadership team. These are riveting. 408, Employment Contract, new policy for professional personnel. 411, suspensions and furloughs. Titles have been updated to accurately reflect our professional personnel. Mind you, some of these policies haven't been touched in like, I don't know, 20 years, right, Alice?
Right.
So, somebody has to do it. And then you notice, nobody else from the Policy Committee is here. We updated 428.1, Salary Guide. Language is simplified and collective bargaining agreement was referenced. 432 was Working Periods. Strangely enough, these things are documented, and clock times for the school day were revised. 530, Overtime. Minor revisions were made to the language for overtime hours. 815.1, Email Usage and Retention. Language was removed, that no longer reflects our current practice regarding the email backup server. I'm sure Joe, who's not here, could tell us more. Policies are that we're retiring. 308, Employment Contract, 508, Employment Contract, 332, Working Periods, 528, Wage and Salary. So, that's the good news. We didn't add anything, and we got rid of some. There'll be a quiz later.
Fox County Intermediate Unit, Mr. Jackson.
The IU is scheduled to meet on Tuesday down in Doylestown, which is the location, but unfortunately, because of the snow, we did it by telephone, which is nice, but we're still able to do it. Included the list of bills that were, or motions that were passed at that meeting, as long as the typical awesome news, so you can see all the highlights of some of the programs that the IU runs throughout the year. So, those who care to can look that up at their leisure. And that's really all I have to say about the IU.
Legislative Report, Mr. Jackson.
Legislative Report. One of the things I want to highlight right away is, I know Ms. Mitchell, at a last meeting, because a legislative subject was raised, suggested that perhaps there should be somewhere to put information that would be interesting to the community at large with regard to this type of information. Legislative bills proposed out of Harrisburg that may have an effect on the community and the school district in general. I've asked that Alice put this up in a public manner on Board Docs every month, because this legislative report that I bring today comes from the IU. They have a representative at the IU who stays in touch daily with people in Harrisburg and updates us at our IU Board Meeting every month, and I take that information and I post it here for your use. So, this information should be publicly accessible on Board Docs today, and I've asked Alice to keep that going from now on. So, for those who care to look, there's always going to be a legislative report during, at the second meeting of every month, that has interesting things, such as, with school safety being such a hot topic, there's no shortage of people in Harrisburg and nationally who want to do something. As of March 12th, there are 26 different bills making their way through Harrisburg. So, I'm not about to tell you what will or may happen, I just don't know, but those who pretend to be knowledgeable on the subject out in Harrisburg are working on some way to mess up our lives. The Auditor General has taken it upon himself to expand his influence in checking out school safety when they do audits of our schools and whatnot. There's a list on the legislative report of additional places they're looking at when they come to look at the schools, see if we're safe. Other items of interest, the House last year passed a bill, House Bill 153, to reduce the number of state legislatures, down from 203 to 151, which frankly, I think is a great thing, you know, less people in Harrisburg is always a good thing. That has to pass for two consecutive sessions in a row before it can go to the public and make its way as a constitutional amendment. However, the legislative of Harrisburg, having passed it last year, they have to pass the exact same bill, they cannot make any changes, any changes to it. Apparently, somebody thought that it wasn't such a great idea to reduce it so quickly, so they've instituted some changes, which means the clock would start all over again if the change is passed, and they'd have to pass this one with the changes and wait another year and pass it again the following year. So, it's my understanding that this is just a way to kick the can down the road. I know that's Mr. McCucci's favorite saying. There you go.
Can kicking full.
So, it's things of interest to the school board. House Bill 638 is making its way through the legislature. What that will do will prevent the school board position from cross-filing elections. That's where it's making its way through the legislature at this moment. Not sure if it'll pass, but that's the proposal. Similarly, I know Mr. Spear had an issue several meetings ago about things that are brought forth on the floor by the school boards or other legislative bodies without the public's ability to comment on it or have advanced warning. House Bill... House Bill 1531 is making its way, an amendment to the Sunshine Act, which would prevent that. Any action motion cannot be made on the floor at a meeting and voted on without first having been advertised and allowed for the public to make comment on it. So if this were to pass, that kind of happening would be prevented in the future. And lastly, we're all in the middle of a budget sequence of the year, our annual budget process. Tax reform has been talked about a lot, whether or not the state will pass property tax elimination. It's all set up to do that. Everybody in Harrisburg believes it's a done deal. The question is simply a matter of time. This being an election year, rumor has it, nobody's willing to make that bold step until after November, so it's unlikely anything will happen this year. But for those of us who concern ourselves with where the money is coming from to fund the school districts, more than likely, if not next year, fairly soon, property taxes will be eliminated as the funding mechanism for school boards.
Imagine Act One going away.
Just saying.
Yeah.
That's the end of the report.
Very informative report. Thank you very much.
Just one quick question. I don't know if you know the answer, but so the House Bill 638, which says that candidates would no longer be able to cross-file, does that mean that they would have to choose a party or are they removing party altogether?
No, they'd have to choose a party.
Your party.
Oh, so stupid. Okay.
Well, I mean, that's what every other candidate...
I don't think that parties should be at all concerned with school board personally. But, okay.
There you have it. Okay, the Upper Bucks County Technical School, Mr. Akmanowicz.
All right, I got some quick notes here. It shouldn't be as lengthy as I usually am, spare you all. Student of the Month, Bryce Schmel. He's from Pen Ridge. Received Quakertown, excuse me, forgive me, Upper Bucks Technical School, received a donation of about $5,300 in total throughout the last monthly cycle, about $4,300 of it. I just want to make sure that I point out was from Lewis Brothers Construction here in Quakertown. Thank you very much. Employee benefits in regards to the Upper Bucks Technical School staff is going to be changing to Delaware Valley Insurance Trust, otherwise known as DIVIT. They will be exiting the association they're currently in with Quakertown, as well as some of the other surrounding school districts. We adopted the hazing policy and bullying policy that we reviewed the prior month. We also approved the new updated calendar with the new makeup days, which we are sure to most likely update once again. And then last but not least, we received a $50,000 grant for, I believe it was for equipment, if I am not mistaken, and actually is pretty notable that we are one of two tech schools that received a full $50,000 grant. That is my report, sir.
Thank you very much. That concludes the committee reports. President's report, nothing to add except his tooth is throbbing. It's a lot better than I feared it would be. Root canals have come a long way, apparently. I think we need to wait for Ms. Mitchell to return to move to the action items. Anyone out there have a root canal before?
Yeah.
They're kind of scary. Thinking about them is worse all week long, you know. I know Dr. Harner had a tooth pulled on Friday.
Thank you, sir, for sharing.
Well, I know you had a tooth pulled on Friday, and then you were like walking to schools an hour and a half later and then having breakfast, meeting, lunch, meeting. Like, that's a West Point thing.
No, that's what us educators have to do.
I guess. I was impressed. He's on the phone. He's like, hold on, he's pulling now.
It was after a root canal, sir, and a crown.
Thanks for the warning. Okay, so items for actions, this one's sad. The first item on the agenda is the retirement of our Board Secretary, Ms. Bishop. I need a motion to accept the retirement of Board Secretary, Ms. Alice Bishop, effective June 30th.
So moved.
Mr. Anderson.
Second.
Mr. Jackson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries unanimously. And then that brings us to the appointment of Board Secretary. If I got to put on my eyeglasses, I believe there she is right in front of me. I need a motion to approve the appointment of the new Board Secretary. The administration is recommending that the Board Appointment is Anita Caseman. That would actually be, if I'm not mistaken, the mother of Ms. Caseman, who spoke to us earlier. So is she going to go to medical school or...
Neuroscience.
Neuroscience, wow. Impressive. To assume the responsibilities of the Secretary. And I need a motion to approve the appointment of the Board Secretary, Ms. Caseman.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
It's Mr. Akmanowicz. Okay, all opposed? Any opposed? Okay, carries unanimously. Any public comment on the fiscal items presented? Okay, the fiscal agenda has three items that will have a roll call vote for each item. Item A is to amend the resolution dated March 9th for the general obligation of the bond series, that I mentioned from the Finance Committee. I need a motion to approve the amendment to the March 9th, 2017 Resolution for the issuance of the general obligation bond series A of 2017 to expand the scope of the project finance to include other capital improvements to the school facilities of the district.
So moved.
Mr. Jackson and Ms. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries unanimously. The second item is the Upper Bucks Technical School Budget. I need a motion for the business services. Who's this motion?
A motion to approve the Upper Bucks Technical School Budget.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries unanimously. I think, oh, Mr. Jackson removed himself from, pulled himself from the voucher James bills list. This is February 2018. I need a motion to approve the February 2018 voucher and James bills list.
So moved.
Mr. Anderson?
Second.
Mr. Kern, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstention.
Okay, unanimously with one abstention. Okay, we have the fiscal consent agenda, including the eight items listed, which includes the bills list, budget transfer, the treasurer's report, the Camp Knox-Mixon contract, the room reservation with Arts Quest and Steel Stacks for the senior prom, the license agreement with Panorama Education, the lease agreement with Richland Township and RASA. I need a motion to approve the fiscal consent agenda as presented.
Am I allowed to ask a question before?
Surely, absolutely.
I have a question about the RASA agreement.
Okay.
So we have, who organized this? I guess Dr. Harner, I mean, who wrote this? Who was involved in negotiations? I'm just curious. Pardon me? The RASA negotiations and the contract that we're about to review.
Yes, sir.
And approve. Who was involved in those negotiations?
Mr. Schock was in the contract review. Mr. Harper was there to help build the relationship. What the RASA agreement is a windfall, doesn't give us, we've already, as a board, had approved the project to build, for our work in building the relationship, is for us to provide, build the facility that was paid for by RASA and by the township. By doing that in-kind contribution, we get full access to that facility during the season, preseason, season of that facility. So this is a windfall for us.
I'm only concerned, I understood that, actually, but I read something about us giving them $2,500 a year for 10 years.
No, that's RASA pays the township $2,500.
Thank you.
The district is no expense other than line paint for the softball team.
And do we have somebody internally that does that or do we pay?
We do that.
We do that. Okay, thank you.
This is a windfall contract for us in that partnership.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the fiscal consent agenda, items as presented.
I'll motion.
Ms. Mitchell?
In second.
Mr. Akmanowicz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Public comment on the human resources items presented for a vote? Okay, the human resource consent agenda, six sessions, including unit pay, support staff, professional staff, conditional secretary staff. And, what's confidential? Oh, confidential secretary staff. I need a motion to adopt the above resolution and approve the personnel items as recommended.
So moved.
Mr. Jackson, any second?
We're voting on the agenda for...
It's all the human resources, including the furloughs.
That's in there.
We're not voting on that tonight, you're saying?
Yeah, that's everything.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson? All in favor, say aye.
Discussion on that one.
Discussion?
Okay, hold on.
Okay.
We're, I mean, there's some sort of stuff in here, so are we going to vote on these individually or...
Well, you can pull out anything you want.
I just think, I think, you know, with the furlough of the staff being on the table, that should be a separate discussion.
Absolutely. Okay, you want to pull that out?
Yes.
Okay, so, so on it, we have, yeah, it's going to be supervisory technology staff, unit pay, support staff. We're pulling E, professional staff.
You would pull just items three and four under item E.
Okay, items three and four under item E.
And five.
Five, five, it's our next page.
Okay, that would be suspensions, three, four, five. Okay, so we're voting on the consent agenda minus those items. Okay.
Are you sure you don't want to include six as well or no?
What's that?
You want to include six as well or no?
Um...
Six is if someone's being employed.
Those are, yeah, those are hirings.
Okay, do I have a motion to, well, we pulled the items. Okay.
Do we have to officially amend the motion?
Oh, we pulled the items, Mr. Gardner.
So you're just voting, are they except those three items you just mentioned? So all of them?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the human resources consent agenda with those items pulled?
So moved.
Mr. Jackson?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Anderson. Okay, discussion.
Seems straightforward to me.
It's pretty straightforward. It's not pleasant, it's straightforward. It's been a year talking about it.
Wait, we're not talking about that yet.
We haven't said aye or nay yet.
Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that part carries unanimously. Now discussion.
So now this discussion is going to be specific to the furloughs?
Furloughs.
For the teachers, right?
You need a motion in a second before you have discussion.
Okay.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
Has there been a motion?
No, I presume that you did. I apologize.
Okay, so now for point of order for the, for your legal language, we go to the items E, sections three, four, and five. We need a motion, okay, we need a motion to adopt professional items E, three, four, and five.
Unless you want to separate any of those individual items out either.
I suspect that they're all or none. Correct?
Let me...
So moved.
Okay, that's Mr. Jackson.
I'll second that if you need it.
Second that, okay, discussion.
I would advise the board you need five affirmative votes to approve E, three, four, and five.
Because of the absent members.
Pardon?
Because of the absent members.
Well, you need five votes anyway.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But a simple majority tonight doesn't do it, is what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay, just clear for everybody. Okay, now we have a proper discussion.
Dr. Harner, could you explain a little bit about the process wherein, by, we, by regulation, I believe, have to put this out at this date, even though maybe you're able to avoid them?
To begin the conversation, I'd like to give a little history and how we got to where we're at today, and it began in the budget discussions last year. Ms. Edwards, would you pick that one up, please?
Okay, the furloughs that are resulting tonight go back to the two-year plan in order to close the budget deficit, and that involved the closing of Milford Middle School last year. We did not have to furlough any staff members. As a result of that, we had enough retirements and resignations to do that by attrition. This year, with the vote to close to Hickon Valley, the, most of the savings come from the reduction in personnel, not from the building as a physical structure. So all of these positions that are being furloughed are already reflected in the budget. They've already been removed, and it is part of that budget gap closing process. At this point in time, or close to this point in time, we're required to give notice to people who may be furloughed. There are a number of things that could happen between now and August that would cause any of these individuals not to actually lose their job. So we could have additional retirements and resignations. The list is as short as it is because we already had some retirements and resignations. We could make a different decision about some of the individual positions when you get to the final budget. For example, if our revenues came in significantly more than we were anticipating when we get our May assessment data, then you might entertain a discussion about whether you want to furlough all of the positions or retain some of them. So those decisions are yet to be made. Your vote tonight allows the furlough of these individuals, if none of those things happen, and we get to the end of the year, and none of those things have happened, the positions have not been restored, or there aren't any vacancies for the people to go into, then the motion that you're voting on tonight is what authorizes us to furlough them. We, the last time we had to go through this was when we closed Haycock Elementary School, which was a number of years ago now. And in the end, we ended up furloughing three individuals. We were able to hire them all for long-term substitute positions, which while the salary was lower, it did preserve their employment and benefits and Peasor's credit and all of those things. And then they were recalled. Everyone who's furloughed has a right to be recalled in inverse order, so the most senior person gets, that's being furloughed, gets recalled first. And we're not permitted to hire anyone in that certification area until we have recalled everybody on the recall list that wishes to come back. So there's a lot of factors that will influence how many of these people will actually lose a job or be offered long-term sub-employment between now and June. So your vote tonight just authorizes that to happen in the event that none of those circumstances come to fruition. Okay, does that help?
What would be the hit if we didn't furlough these folks and none of the magic miracles happened?
Well, we still have a $2 million... Well, we still have a $2 million gap. That was reported at the finance committee meeting, and the value of the positions that are being furloughed is somewhere between 600 or 700,000? Oops, sorry, 796,000, so it's actually a little more than I thought. So that would increase the budget gap by almost $800,000.
That's what the savings, the proposed savings are gonna be, you're saying, for the furloughed staff?
The budget we did tonight has this in it.
Yes, reflects the furlough of those staff and the value of those positions is just under $800,000. So it would widen our budget gap by $800,000.
So my question about the long-term subs, is that even an option for, do we anticipate having that type of position available for those staff members?
I would say for most of the people, it's likely. Like, if you're elementary certified, the likelihood that we're gonna have a year-long leave or similar circumstance in elementary is high, based on our past history. It's not, would not be as certain for something like guidance or a nurse, because there are many fewer of those positions, so the likelihood that someone will take a leave in that area, it's a much smaller pool of people. So I would say that's not as likely.
Didn't we offer at least one already? I mean, long-term subs, do we have a couple of those positions already open?
Yeah, we have positions open and posted, we have not filled any long-term substitute positions for next year yet.
There is a place for these people?
Can't promise that there's a place for them, but I think the elementary certified people, it's likely, and the others not as much.
So I have a lot of questions, so bear with me. So one thing I wanted to make clear was, there was discussion about the teachers who are retiring that were not filling those positions. So how many does that make in total over the last two years, total positions that are eliminated, including those that were not filled after retirement?
I'm looking at it right now. So in fiscal year 2016 and 17, the actual number, according to the stuff online, was 309 teachers, 309.64 teachers, with 306 being full-time and 6 being part-time. So if you fast forward to the proposed budget changes, it goes down to 286.91.
He's looking at it.
Is that, is that accurate?
This is the number, but this also says that we only have four school nurses, and I heard tonight we had 12. I'm not sure what the number is.
We have four certified school nurses, which is just about what we're required to have by school code, and our other school nurses are registered nurse assistants, and not certified school nurses.
So registered nurse assistants, are they registered nurses?
They are registered nurses, yes, sir.
So that's, can we confirm that number is correct?
It's on the website.
I just want, I just wanna make sure, because of the whole, I wasn't aware that that included the number that we're not filling, you know what I'm saying, like, the people that are retired.
I would imagine whoever populates this spreadsheet, district staffing FTE count over six years, attachment F, is where we get the numbers from.
Yes, I do think the line item you're reading, though, is the, there's a number of positions that are professional staff positions that are broken out in individual line items. If you're looking at the spreadsheet I think you're looking at, so like, reading specialists have a line, guidance counselors have a line. So that line at the bottom is everybody who doesn't fall into one of the categories that's broken out. It's not the, yeah, the total of the bargaining unit positions overall would go from 372 in 2013, 14, and will be down to just under 341 in total professional positions, that includes all the different categories.
From 2013?
Yes, and the document with the six-year change is posted in Board Docs tonight, I believe.
And how many students? Can we, can we, does anybody have that readily available? How many students from 2013 to 17?
I should do. So our current enrollment was 5,329, projected next year is 5,221.
So from, you mean from 2013?
No, 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 I'm sorry, the last year to this year.
Okay, can, does somebody have enrollment numbers from 2013?
I can look it up.
So my question, while you're looking that up, is...
I have it right here for you. So 2013, actual total?
Yep.
2013, 5,329.
Okay.
And if we're looking to next year, which is 2018, 19, 500, 5,221. So actually, I went back four years on my numbers as well, so.
Okay. So someone mentioned earlier about averages when it comes to counselors, guidance counselors per school, and I, so I would like to know if we have the numbers per school. That seemed, that number did seem, the average, I guess, can be a little bit misleading if you're talking about certain schools. Do you have quite a bigger ratio? Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And Joe got it right about the numbers in one building versus, for example, at the sixth-grade center, we have approximately 423 students, and you have two counselors there. At the, at Strayer, you have 831 students, and you have three counselors there. So if you get those numbers versus the, at the elementary level, you got different building sizes, you have a counselor at QE, and they have the fewest number of students where you go to POFF, you have the most amount of students. So, and it's one counselor. Just be mindful, they were, there was one counselor for every two buildings across the six, we only, three counselors at the elementary level four years ago. Now we have, now we have six counselors, one per building.
One of the things that came to mind, Mr. Santinelli also sparked it. How do we know when we have enough or not enough? Because I'm with you that I don't really care about the numbers, per se, because what if you have all, you know, crazy, awesome students that sit in this chair every board meeting? We probably need like one counselor per 1,500. But if you have all kinds of, you know, very, very challenging students, we need one per 20 students. So the numbers, to me, are fairly meaningless, but how do you know?
Well, it's also, it's very diff, if I could add on top of that, the complexity of the issues that we have, that's been out in the newspapers recently, but the reality that what you've been, we've been talking here and in retreats about the students that have, need more assistance. We've hired a mental health professional at the, at the high school, has a full dance card, busy the whole time, she's here, what's the student load there?
15.
15, 15 students, no, at the, for the, with a full, with a full, with a full schedule. We have other, other programs, we hired a behavioral specialist this past summer to deal with a lot of that, so that we have a lot of other resources to get, go to a lot of these issues. So just having it by itself is a very difficult challenge, besides the fact that it varies, one per 200-some students to one per 390 students to one per, or two per 415 students.
One thing that I was thinking about when we were in our finance committee meeting was, brought up the point that we have, you know, higher ratio, but we also have a higher poverty ratio, and I feel like that's also something that we need to consider. Usually, people in poverty have a greater need for things like a school counselor. I'm mainly concerned, I'm very concerned about all these furloughs, absolutely very concerned about them and the continued staff cuts within our district, and it's obvious that our, our community is as well. And, you know, without feeling like, to your point earlier, Keith, I'm not really sure what the long-term plan is, you know, feels like we're continuing to cut staff, where does it end? You know, and I know there's a lot of unknowns out there, but one thing I feel like we haven't really taken a look at is, and granted, I don't wanna cut, nobody wants to cut anything, we don't wanna cut programs, but we have not really taken a look at individual programs and the efficiency and cost by program. So what I mean is, let's say you have a program that is extremely costly but only benefits a small number of students. I have not seen really any analysis as far as that's concerned. So if anyone can comment on that...
But if you cut a program, aren't you more, you're almost assured of cutting a staff as well? So you're saying, instead of furloughing these teachers, we should cut a program and furlough another one?
No, not necessarily.
Virtually every special ed program is gonna fall into that category.
I would love to put them in a place where they, we could have smaller class sizes, you know, in another area where we might have, see a great, you know, a number of students. I mean, I don't know all the answers, I just feel like, at this point, I do have a lot of concerns about, you know, growing class sizes. We're, here we are, we are, it's from a community standpoint, I'm sure it feels like we're spending, spending, spending. You know, we're spending all this money on NIDIC, we're looking at other areas of spending, and we're hiring, apparently, another administrator, which I still don't understand the justification for that, and yet...
Remember, this resolution, with regards to the teachers, isn't a done deal. It's that we have four teachers on the list, and the possibility of alternatives, of retirements happening, of revenues increasing, exists. You know, it's four teachers, and we haven't been cutting staff. We, the administration has been repurposing and not replacing people already retiring. This has been...
31 staff members less than 2013.
We're on a really slippery slope, and this is, I mentioned this in the finance committee, that this is simply kicking the can down the road. You know, if you listen to when we talk about the Act One index, we haven't looked at going up and keeping teachers, we talked simply about furloughing teachers. We saw new numbers today, which we're not even sure what the actual numbers are. And as, if my calculations are correct, we're down about 8% in teachers in the last three or four years. Pretty soon, if you keep on this trajectory, I don't know that you'll have many teachers. You may have 1 to 200, and we can be like a college. So I think we have to really consider this moving forward. I don't think that this is an easy, I'm not in agreeance with it. I think we need to go back to the drawing board. One thing that hasn't changed was our administration. I mean, there's still 24 out of 24 administrators. We have two less buildings, at least according to the numbers I looked at today. We increased this TOSA position, we're increasing TOSA positions, and yet we're eliminating other positions. So I don't feel real comfortable with, with this, the way it's presented tonight, and I think we need to go back to the drawing board and really hammer this out, and be convinced that we have a long-term strategy to address the community as a whole. I know taxes are bearing on everybody, we hear about it, I understand that, understand it. But we have, we have kids whose lives are gonna be affected by the decisions that we make, and by constantly closing schools, constantly eliminating teachers, we run the risk of destroying our long-term community if we're not serious about it.
Just to bring some other numbers to bear, we have declining enrollment of 137. Our proposed budget is an increase of 4.5 million. That's an 11.6% increase in per pupil cost. So there's two sides to that coin. I'd love to keep everybody.
And I don't disagree with that, and one of the things we talked about tonight in the finance committee is benchmarking. Let's see what other districts are doing versus what we're doing. I asked for where that data comes from. I couldn't find, I mean, I found a site like...
Like Scranton furloughed 51 teachers last month, you know?
Openpa.gov was the only thing I could find where it had some information that I thought was, was...
Yeah, I would love, I would love to ask the teachers who spoke, and Ryan and Mr. Santinelli, as you were speaking, I mean, it's pretty hard to sit up here and not feel completely compassionate, right? And it's just like when Mrs. Kondraki, it's pretty hard not to be compassionate and empathetic. I, you know, we're stuck between a rock and a horrible hard place, and it's really hot sometimes. What is the solution? What do we do? Well, that's an easy scapegoat. How much you think that costs per year? Maybe?
I mean, teachers, does that equate to, I don't have money?
I bet it's not that at all. I'm pretty sure, Chris, it's not even remotely close. We don't do...
You also have to take into account the annual maintenance for the field, because that field, that turf field needs to be replaced.
My point is, it's, it's, it's easy to say it's a $70 million high school renovation, which when I looked at it, I was like, wow, my school wasn't that nice. All these things are, they don't cost what they appear on the outside. $20 million NIDIC renovation, that isn't $20 million. Just like when you buy a car, unless you bought it for cash, it ain't the cost of the car. It's your $300 lease or something like that. I don't know.
Ms. Edwards, what's our deadline on this?
You have to decide at the next meeting, because if you don't choose to do it, then you can't furlough anyone and you pay all your faculty. So you'd have to choose to make a decision one way or the other at the next meeting at the latest.
I would like to add another fact banner on the problem, where Ms. Edwards talked about the savings of $800,000. We don't have all the classroom spaces for all these teachers, so Hickon Valley would have to remain open. And then you're putting back the administrative cuts that we don't have on the table this time. We took them already, we didn't replace Ms. Serge when she retired. We have a temporary person in there at the, at the sixth-grade center. So you're looking at about a $1.7 million versus an $800,000 number, or whatever the Hickon Valley was, because you're gonna have open up food services, custodial services, the secretary, the principal, and all that. So you're gonna, we're gonna be adding on another administrator. And the administrator that I asked for in this, if you've heard a lot about the issues by bringing, we brought in last year because of closing, because of moving the sixth grades, creating the sixth-grade center, the freshmen moved up to the high school. We eliminated that assistant principal position and, and the TOSA that went along with it, teacher on special assignment. And if you don't have that, you have, you need another person, like you have Ms. Holly there that you had at Milford, who does, who handles like a lot of low-level discipline and administrative things. So we have to put that back in the budget. You also have to put back in the Ms. Serge that we took out, her placeholder in the budget.
Can we stop for a second, though?
So you're talking close to $2 million worth of needs.
Well, that's what the assumption, though, of keeping, you're talking about keeping the school open. I'm a little bit lost on, there's four teachers, we'd have to keep a school open, you're saying, to find places for four teachers?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay.
And our, I think, go ahead.
I don't think that we would have classroom space to add sections, nor would it be feasible given the proposed class sizes necessarily, if you look at the class size chart for next year.
So, so we're furloughing because we're closing a building, there's no space for it? I thought, if we had the money for you right now, would you, would you be able to put them to work somewhere, doing something, teaching?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, just making sure.
Without opening up a school?
Right.
For four people, right? I'm sure people would welcome a little crowding.
So... Just a reminder also, Mr. Wehan asked a question during his presentation. He said, "When is the board gonna start admitting that it's our fault? Stop blaming Peasars or something?" Stop blaming Peasars or something else?" Something like, something like that. I want to remind everybody here that I am constantly, you may not believe it, I'm constantly saying that where we find ourselves today is the board's fault. Not the four members who are new, I'll grant them that, the five of us who remain, plus the previous board members. Because Dr. Harner annually stands before us and asks us to grant him some exceptions in the budget so he can properly do what he is needed to do, and the previous board annually had said, "No, sir. You will find the cuts necessary to whatever program or anything you can do to keep us at the Act One Index." And last year, he produced the decision to close two schools, furlough 37 teachers, cut a number of programs. And the five remaining board members, along with the previous ones, said, "Sounds like a good plan to us, do it." So I think the, while we often will say that Peasars is one of the driving forces that's increasing the budget annually, I do not believe it's adequate to say we deflect the situation where we are away from ourselves. There's been other items I do want to bring up, that the original proposal that we approved, that the full board, shouldn't say the full board, I believe Mr. Smith voted against it, but the, those who did budget, did approve the budget, approved a budget knowing that 37 teachers would be furloughed. Certainly, it's not necessarily something to, you know, celebrate, but that number of 37 has dropped down to seven that we have to contemplate. I know that, I'm a very blunt person, I'm sure you can tell that, certainly, the members of the board know this to be the fact. Sometimes that offends, and I apologize to the union members present, but I'm going to be blunt and I'm going to offend. Several individuals stood up today and said that it's not necessarily the position. I mean, you're letting go of a nurse, you're letting go of an art teacher, you're letting go of a guidance counselor. It's not that you're cutting that position, it's that you're cutting that person. A lot of impassioned feelings were presented for the individual person being furloughed. In my mind, and again, I'm sure this is not your intent, but that comment in itself suggests that the person we're going to bring in to replace that person is somehow not qualified to do the same job.
You shouldn't have replaced them.
There'll be one guidance counselor for each school?
There'll be two at PAF next year.
So there'll be at least one guidance, were there two at Trum this year?
There was one.
Will there be one at Trum next year?
Then with the increase, with the closure of Hicken Valley, they'll have two counselors at PAF.
Will it be one at Trum? One?
Yes, sir.
Were there two this year?
There was one.
So there's one this year, there'll be one next year?
Yes.
So, again, and I'm not criticizing the individual teacher, I'm sure she's a wonderful teacher, but to say that you need that teacher suggests that whoever we're bringing in is not qualified to do the same job she is doing. And I know you may not agree with that, but you're right, you don't know. That's exactly a very true statement, you don't know. But I know that when we were closing Milford Middle School, I heard from a lot of people who said that they were, you know, very upset for this person or that person, and I'm sure there were a lot of people who left Milford who loved Mr. Sugar immensely, and were sure that there would never, no way that anybody could do as good a job as Mr. Sugar. I highly doubt a lot of them are complaining about the job Mr. Santinelli is doing today. And I'm not saying that these individual teachers are not the best for these individual students. I'm just stating that constant statement that we need that particular person suggests that you yourselves are questioning the ability of the replacement to fill that role.
So I think, yeah, I mean, what he's saying, I think what he's saying is that whoever's going to that position to take it, but, yeah, exactly. I agree. So, you know, I think we have to go back, I mean, my recommendation would be, and I'm going to vote no tonight for it, is going to be to relook at this at the Financial Committee.
Yeah, can I interrupt?
I have a suggestion. I'd like to motion to table the vote.
Kayla and I were doing a side talk, and I think that Ms. Mitchell and Mr. McCucci and, I guess, Mr. Akman was as well, right? Whoever else wants to would probably benefit from gathering more information directly from Ms. Edwards and Dr. Harner before the next meeting. The deadline for this vote to have your questions answered thoroughly, to look at everything so that you're comfortable to make the vote, because you, you know, haven't had enough time to, and to look at it thoroughly and come to a, you know, a decision that you can have a good conscience about making the vote for.
Well, I guess the wait, one question I have, though, is if we were, if we vote no tonight, if you don't have enough votes tonight, does that mean we vote again?
Yeah, it'll be brought up for...
Back until the deadline, yes.
So, so it's, it's almost like, it would, it would be very similar to tabling it if we wouldn't get the votes tonight.
The result will be the same, right?
So, okay.
Yeah, so the thing is, so the thing is to gather more information so that you feel actually prepared. I think that'd be appropriate, so...
I agree.
So the...
So I need somebody to second my motion.
Yeah, we have a motion to table, Mr. McCucci seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the, the motion is tabled till the next meeting, and that time, whoever is looking for more information to feel prepared for that vote, please gather everything and be...
Please ask the questions.
Yeah, please ask the questions.
Spend the time researching.
So is there going to be in the interim another finance meeting where we'll, before the next vote?
Actually, I would, there isn't, but Zach is very accessible, as is Dr. Harner and Ms. Edwards, as you know, and I would encourage you to ask every question.
We can do that, if I could, sir? Education Committee, what do we have? It's fine. We do it before the next board meeting.
Do a Nat-Hoc meeting?
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't mind that.
Would that be on the fifth?
Is there an issue with the advertisement of that meeting, the timelines?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Garten, is there...
The Education Committee is already advertised, isn't it?
Yes. Does it replace the...
Well, I would just make sure you provide appropriate notice, you're going to be discussing other issues besides just the educational curriculum, so the public knows.
Okay. Okay, fair enough.
And I just want to say to the public, I encourage you guys to come to the finance. I really encourage people to look at the budget, look at the numbers, and speak out to us, reach out to us in a very constructive way. I know that, you know, the community that I talk to, you know, feels passionate, and I ask them, "Have you looked at the budget?", and they haven't. And so, you know, we're here to serve as part of community members, we're accessible, and so I encourage everybody to take a look at things, and if you have any suggestions, you know, email them to us, because I think, I think we're stronger as a group than we are as individuals, so...
And in fairness, I don't think anyone here wants to furlough, obviously, staff, and the budget is challenging, I will admit, it is. So, you know, we could use as many, said ayes, suggestions as we possibly can, because at the end of the day, there's going to need, we're going to need to solve for this one way or another. We just hope that we can avoid that being staff.
Yeah, and it could be, I mean, you know, taxes are real, and so they affect everybody, and so we have to be conscientious of that. And so I know there's folks in the community critical of us not putting our line in the sand against the Act, or for the Act One Index, or not going above it. I forget what the negative talk of how we voted that particular, you know, made that motion or whatever. But, but we're really trying to do our due diligence. I really feel that, that decisions that are made today will affect us, not only this year, in the short term, but in, in one or two or three years out. And so I'm pretty passionate, if the only way we're going to make budgetary, the budget meet is by cutting people, this, every year, we're going to be having this, the same discussion, and it's, it's not something that I think is really, what we should really be doing is planning for two, three, and four years out. And so that's, that's really what I challenge all of us to look at it.
Yeah.
And not just the here and now, but, you know, what's it going to look like in a, in a two- or three-year time period?
Okay, fair enough. Moving on to policies and program items, any public comment on policies and program items presented for a vote? Okay. We have the policy and programs consent agenda, the exciting things Mr. Kern read about. I need a motion to approve the policies as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay, hey, that brings us to information items. All right, information item, March, let's see, we have a board briefing book. Regular voting meeting, March 22nd, public information. A reminder that updates to the board briefing book are located under library tab, as well as information on the data and how to best view the board briefing book is on your laptop. Communications, items, none are listed. Board comment, any new business from the board members? Okay, public comment, last opportunity for general public comment. I see a lot of hands, let's start right over here, I'm going to go clockwise. State your name and area of residence, please.
I'm not actually a resident. My name is Kathleen Plaznarski, I'm the Assistant Director of Upper Bucks County Technical School, and I would just feel really horrible if I left and didn't thank you for approving our budget, and thank you for your continued support of career and technical education. So, thank you.
Remind everybody about the lunch with the bunny.
Thank you, Zach.
I forgot, lunch with the bunny, when's the, when's the makeup date for lunch with the bunny?
The 24th.
The 24th is lunch with the bunny at the tech school, please. Breakfast, thank you.
I have to tell you personally, I'm a big, big, big fan of the students. I was actually at the fundraiser at the Upper Perk YMCA last week, and a lot of your students were there cooking up delicious things, but everywhere I go, I see talented young people ready to work, and so keep up the good work, really proud of you.
I need to brag, though, we have lots of kids.
You do, you really do, constantly. So, thank you, keep up the good work. Okay, other comments? I saw hands back, Mr. Wean.
Ryan Wean, QCA President. I'm actually shocked, Mr. Jackson, that you didn't bring this up in the legislative update, because you seem very passionate about this topic, but my own representative, Marsha Haun from Northampton County, has proposed a bill, and as has Mario Scavello of Monroe County, Senate Bill 1048, and it's to eliminate schools to be the first choice for polling stations. In Nazareth, which is right down the road from my house, unfortunately, there was an active shooter on Route 33 last year, and because the schools were being used as a polling station, they were not allowed to lock down the school. So that pushed at least Representative Haun to put forward this bill. So there seems to be a lot of support, from what I've read, behind these bills.
Definitely for much.
And I'm asking, and I'm asking that, you know, I'm, I actually personally reached out to Marsha Haun and encouraged her to keep pushing with this bill. I'm going to do the same with my members, I think it's something that maybe our district should reach out as well.
I appreciate that, just so you remember, I get my legislative report from the Representative of the IU, so that's why...
It was not against you, I was just saying.
I didn't see it on there, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wean. Mr. Orloff.
I don't think anybody wants to furlough anybody, but the fact that you arrived at this position is indicative of the policies and the mismanagement of the past. I would also like to say that all the board members today, especially the newbies, have no responsibility of, relative to the policies of the past, including you gentlemen who've been here for four years. All this stuff is baked in the cake at that particular time, decades ago, especially during the Scanlon administration. The other thing is, the district is at Arubicon. Dr. Harner's own numbers project the census in 2021 to go to 4,800, 4,900? So I don't see how you can say you're going to maintain the exact same staffing when you're going to lose 300 kids, almost a whole grade school, within the next four years.
Weren't you up here saying you thought that that was going to increase not that long ago?
What's that? Me? Never.
Because of the homes in Richland Township, I do recall?
You didn't say the tax base was going to increase.
Correct. Yeah, okay.
And you cited...
No, I said, I asked them if the, I asked if the tax base was going to increase, if they factor anything out. We do have some age-qualified homes going in. Age-qualified homes don't have school-aged kids. We have a couple developments that have now, are available to pull permits, but they're not pulling that many permits. The commercial base has increased a little bit along 309, most people have noticed it, but we are losing people across, in fact, it's not just the Quaker Town area, it's a Bucks County and Pennsylvania area. We're going to lose at least one congressman. The, and if, again, if your own, if your own demography shows that you're going down to 4,800, 4,900 kids, you're losing 300 kids. That's, that's a projection that's kind of baked into the cake. So we've gone from 5,600 down to 4,800, 800 kids. So I don't see how you can maintain the same exact staffing. When you're, what's that?
We haven't maintained.
No, but I mean, going forward.
No, no, I don't disagree with you.
Okay.
I mean, I think a long-term strategy has to be to figure out...
Correct.
And match these two things up, but, but we're, we're also losing, we're losing not only, are we furloughing, but we're not replacing, how many teachers are we not replacing?
We've been, we've been a triting staff all along. I get, I get, yeah.
Each year, we're, you know, when people are retiring, we're not filling those positions.
You raised a very good point earlier, too, that if there are 25 or 40 people in administration, they haven't taken a single cut. I don't know if that's true or not.
I don't know, it's the numbers on here.
Okay, I, no doubt the reason to doubt you. That, there's a whole lot of new technology that's going on there, like you can outsource payroll, you can outsource payables, a lot of transactional work is going outside, because they can do it a lot more efficiently than having one-man departments, that, those kinds of things have happened. So there are, so I would suggest maybe you spend a few bucks, and, not me, by the way, and hire somebody to do a performance audit of the, of the district, look at some of their processes, work processes. There might be some opportunity in that regard. Finally, prior to 2000, I guess it was 14 or 15, I would say this area was a sell. When the old board, including these gentlemen here, was elected, I thought it was a hold. I think right now, if you don't get, get a hold of this Act One, if you don't limit the spending, this community is a sell. I mean, I'm talking to people, four people in particular, they're, they're looking to get now. My mother lives in Middletown, Delaware, her house is worth $300,000. She pays $1,500 for the first time in her property taxes. My house is worth low twos, I'm paying over $4,000. So I'm, it's just, it's just... The point is, if I live 20 more years, and I, I go down to some of, I'm looking at maybe a $60,000 savings in taxes. That's assuming where it's at now. So you guys got some pretty hard lifting if you want to get this community back to being a buy, and right now, it's not a buy.
We're working on that.
Thank you.
The one thing I, I don't, I have yet to understand is why people are so proud of staying under Act One. It's like, you're still raising taxes. Be proud if you didn't raise taxes at all.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, this whole notion of staying in Act One, to me, is silly, because for the average person, the difference between, not to say that I'm for this, I'm just saying, the difference between 2.8 and 4.2 is like 50 bucks for most people a year. So, so be, yeah, but, but be proud if you, don't, don't be proud to say, "I raised taxes, but it's only 2.8 and not 4.2." Give me a doggone break, I mean...
If, if, if the difference between 4.2 and 2.8 is so minimal, why did you not support the resolution to maintain below Act One?
I, I will say, again, as I said before, the reason I wanted to do so is because I didn't want...
is because I didn't want to leave any option, I didn't want to take any of my options off of the table. I feel like that's silly to do that without having all the information.
Actually, in my, in my view, the, the Act One terminology is in the vocabulary of the.
It's political theater is what it is.
Yeah, I know, but in the vocabulary of the tax mark, in the taxpayer, it's a benchmark. If the Act One were 4.2, it would, that would be the Act One. You know, and so the thing is, all around the state, what happens is you have this Act One number that's given to a district, and it actually varies a little bit from district to district based on their resources. And so if you are at Act One, you're par. If you're under Act One, you're heroic. If you're over Act One, you know, you're, you've got a hole in your pocket. And so that, the number becomes more of an optic that you are held under public scrutiny for. And I really think that it's a vocabulary thing for the taxpayer because it's a number they go, they can go to. I think if the Act One was 1.8, let's say Act One was half a percent and you went over Act One, people would be mad. If Act One was 6.2%.
Have we trained them though to be that way?
I don't know how it came to be. I've been doing this for two and a half years. I don't know how it came to be, but I walked into this world of Act One that I never knew.
Act One was passed to try to limit spending.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, but the, but the number.
There's a reason why for Act One.
But I, I understand that, but why the, why the number 2.8 or 4.2 or 3.1 or 1.6 is important and the nominal value of it versus the esoteric value is, is, I guess where people get their hackles up, you know? It's just become this, this line in the sand where the optics of the taxpayers who pay attention get their ire up. And, and apparently, if you stay within Act One, then you have appeased the tax base.
So I have a recommendation. We don't use the term Act One. We don't even use percentages. We actually use real money out of real people's pocket that describes what's the average homeowner in Quakertown going to have to pay.
I'm fine with that.
If we pass a 4.2 versus a 2.8, because that's the only thing that counts. And the beauty about obfuscation that the government's really good at is to make it so that nobody knows what the H we're doing. Because we're using all these dopey terms that mean nothing to anybody and we hardly even know what they are.
The irony is.
And the point behind Mr. Orloff is, Act One, to my knowledge, was to stop the insane raising of tax, like what do we have here under Scanlon or whoever that you're vilifying? 14%, some, like, we had some crazy, Mr. Jackson would know, right? A 14%, I mean, it's great when, when the money's flowing, everybody's happy.
I thought it was 14.4.
Right, everybody loves, everybody loves it when we're, when the town's booming, people are moving in, we're getting all kinds of money, we're spending it like drunken sailors. We, not us, but, right, I mean, that's all happy. But boy, as soon as, as soon as that spigot stops and we have to have real conversations, oh my gosh, it, you know, all hell breaks loose. So, I mean, this is the real world and I think we need to start, stop using stupid terms and use real numbers.
I'm with you, man.
I agree with you 100% and it's, and, and we have to have real conversation on it.
Yes.
Okay.
I like it.
So, dates for board members. Okay, yes. Oh, not. Another public comment.
Very, very brief.
Rats, I was trying to snake out of here.
Very, very brief.
QCA would like to thank Alice Bishop for her service, so thank you.
Oh, yeah. You're not done yet. We'll be thanking Alice all spring. We have, you know, we've, what, the whole season still, so. All right, so, calendar items. You know, I don't, my thing you gave me, it says dates for, and then it says nothing. Oh, oh, there we go. Thursday, April 5th, facilities committing, committee meeting, Community Room A. Thursday, April 12th, education curriculum meeting, now amended to be adjunct finance committee meeting, 7:00 PM work session, regular meeting right here. Monday, April 23rd, policy committee meeting at 5:45.
I'm sorry, that's the board retreat.
Oh, that's a board retreat. Oh, that's, okay, board retreat. That's going to be here. Is there food? Okay, food? Okay, and then, all right, then April 26th, Thursday, finance committee here and then the regular voting meeting. And that brings us to everyone's favorite part of this evening. Do I have a motion for adjournment? Okay, Mr. Anderson, second. All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Opposed? I didn't think so. Good night, everyone. Thanks for coming out.